All right, I'd like to call to order the August 28, 2023 Mountain Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. You please take the roll.
Oh, right.
Commissioner Benshaw?
Here.
Commissioner Benshaw?
President.
Commissioner Harrison?
Here.
Commissioner Mendez?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Spencer?
Here.
And Commissioner Thompson asked me to excuse her.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Thompson?
I would like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Thompson.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Commissioner Thompson has an excused absence for tonight. Item number three, approval of the July 24, 2023 minutes. Anybody have any changes or corrections? I'm not hearing or seeing any. I don't have a copy of the minutes with me on my packet, but I did notice on minutes, might be more of a technical change. It just said on the previous minutes that the last minutes were approved by vote, and it wasn't, we don't usually vote on the minutes if there's no disagreement. We usually just accept them as presented. So it's a... That's what I kind of figured. All right, so other than that technical correction, I'm not seeing any, anybody have any changes or corrections to the minutes, so we'll go ahead and accept those as presented then. Item number four, public comment. Doesn't appear we have any public here tonight. Is there anybody online that wish to speak to the planning commission for any item that is not currently on the agenda? Okay.
No public comment has been received via mail or emails by 4:00 PM today. No virtual audience has seen it this time.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, photos of the planning commission. So it sounds like there might be a slight change in that, but even if we're going to do the photos tonight, why don't we put that at the end of the meeting instead of right in the middle? So we'll just go ahead and move that to the end. Item number six, election of the vice chair. So we currently have that position vacant, so if anybody would be interested in serving in that role, feel free to raise your hand. Otherwise, I might just pick somebody. Just to let you know, so if you're kind of curious, especially for new people, the vice chair, basically, it's the backup for me. If I'm not here, I'm usually here, but, you know, maybe once in a while I'll actually take a vacation. But ideally, the vice chair is also usually the one that'll make the majority of the motions, you know, more of our just technical procedures. Just kind of gets into a nice rhythm. And then I think I said this at one of the last meetings, too. It also helps, usually the vice chair is sitting right next to me, so if they see somebody who's waiting to be recognized and I don't see them, usually they can just kind of lean over and say, "Oh, hey, look in this direction." And, you know, they're kind of my eyes and ears and well, but I, you know, majority is just backup and usually making the motions. That being said, it doesn't, even if you're not the vice chair, doesn't mean you can't make a motion. It's just usually, historically, it's just the vice chair is usually the one that has done the motions in the past. There is no set rule for that. It's, you know, anybody can make the motion. But that being said, is there anybody who'd be willing to give it a go since no one here has been a vice chair before?
That's right.
All right.
Unless anyone else.
All right, so do we, for this, do we still technically need a vote since we just have one? Okay. So while we start off with this, would anybody like to make a motion?
I motion to nominate Commissioner Harrison for vice chair.
All right, I have a motion for Commissioner Harrison to be vice chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Congratulations, you're a new vice chair.
Just going to nominate you anyways.
All right, so item number seven, it says point of planning commission liaison to the comprehensive plan advisory group.
For that item, I do have a presentation on the comprehensive planned advisory group.
Just be prepared, your grilling is going to be worse than the city council work session.
Oh, okay.
Just kidding.
So good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chair Batista, members of the planning commission. Welcome new members. My name is Jonathan Morales. I'm a senior planner here at the City of Mountain Lake Terrace. So today, I'm going to go over briefly our comprehensive plan advisor group that we've formed to inform the comprehensive plan update process. There's just some pretty pictures. This is our logo for the comprehensive plan update process. So as far as the agenda for today, go over the purpose and role of the comprehensive plan advisor group. We've shortened it to an acronym CPAG. The, we'll go over a draft. We'll go over the draft CPAG work plan, and then finally, go over the CPAG appointments by council, some next steps, and have an opportunity for discussion, questions, and then finally move on to the selection of the planning commission liaison. So this presentation today is informational, and we do want to hear your feedback as well. Okay. So the purpose of the comprehensive plan advisory group is firstly, it's an appointed advisory group by city council made up of community members and interested parties in Mountain Lake Terrace and in our region to participate in the planning process and provide diverse community perspectives that will help inform the development of the Mountain Lake Terrace Vision 2044 comprehensive plan update. The role of CPAG members, so they'll serve as a sounding board for ideas and opportunities, and will make recommendations to the Mountain Lake Terrace Planning Commission and city council based on their review of preliminary and draft materials. The CPAG will be instrumental in helping city staff develop and confirm the vision, goals, policies, and actions of the comprehensive plan, as well as other related content. It is also anticipated that CPAG members will serve as liaisons to the broader community, reaching out to people they know and interact with, and then bringing their perspectives back to the planning process. So what we ask of CPAG members is that they think beyond their own personal views and serve in a more representative role of the broader community and the interest sectors that they represent. So with that, you should have received the draft CPAG work plan in your meeting packet. So I'm just going to go over some high level items there. So the CPAG will meet monthly. Currently, our first meeting is scheduled for the fourth Wednesday of the month in September, so September 27 at 6:30 PM. Meetings will be held in hybrid format, so they'll be in person and also remote to ensure there's access to all members who wish to participate. The purpose of the first meeting will be to introduce the process, so it'll be introductory meeting with a review of the existing visionary work in process. So that includes the survey that's currently public, and review state and regional planning requirements, so the Growth Management Act, new legislation for middle housing, for example, regional planning requirements in terms of Vision 2050 out of PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council, while also introduce the plan framework and outline and gather feedback on the potential goals related to each element in the comprehensive plan, and introduce the city's assigned growth targets. So the CPAG is not subject to the Open Public Meetings Act since it is an advisory body, and it's operating as an advisory body, its own entity. However, they will be open to the public, so it'll be a public meeting. Meeting minutes will be taken and published on our website. We'll also have, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, you were probably going to mention if it was recorded or not.
So we currently do not plan to record the meetings. Yeah. But we will have pretty comprehensive minutes taken, and so there will be an opportunity for a public comment after the last 10 to 15 minutes of each meeting. There'll be an opportunity for members of the public to provide some testimony, while also accept the written public comment by 4:00 PM on the date of the, of the meeting. Let's see. And the meetings will be facilitated by our consultant team, so we've, as you know, we've selected OTAC. It'll also be co-led by city staff. So meetings are anticipated to start in September and last up to the summer of 2024. As we envision it now, the topics discussed and materials reviewed for input will then be brought forth to planning commission on a monthly basis to begin in December 2023. So just some context of why we're pushing it to December. So in October, currently it's scheduled for October 4 at 6:30 PM, I believe. And I'll have you correct that.
Six o'clock for dinner, 6:30 start.
Okay. Six o'clock for dinner, 6:30 start. There's going to be a joint planning commission and city council meeting. It's a workshop on comprehensive plan, so it's a comprehensive plan 101 workshop to go over the requirements of the Growth Management Act and just provide some high-level overview of that process at a state and regional and local level. And so this meeting will be open to planning commission and city council, as well as CPAG members and other boards and commissions. It'll also be a public meeting, so it'll be available to the public, and the goal is that we have that recording on our comprehensive plan update webpage as well for reference. And so following the planning commission meetings, it's anticipated that staff will then bring those recommendations and discussion points to council every two months or so. So November is, we're planning to hold November as a placeholder for our CPAS scoping process, so late October, early November is when we want to kick that process off, and so that includes a public meeting. So we won't have a city council or planning commission meeting during that month, but there will be a CPAG meeting as well as the public meeting for the CPAS scoping process. December, so the first planning commission meeting that will come to you is a briefing on the CPAS scoping and an intro to the comp plan organization framework and what we've heard from the CPAS scoping, and city council will also get a similar presentation in December. So overall, the goal is that by September 2024, the CPAG will have reviewed the draft comp plan and developed a set of recommendations to the planning commission. Before I move on to the appointments, is there any questions that I can answer at this point?
So just so I understand, it sounds like the working group is making recommendations to council and the planning commission by September 2024. At that point, then, I know we also have a role in the comprehensive plan, and then council ultimately approves the comprehensive plan. How does our work plan align with theirs, and how does that all align with council at this point?
Sure. So there's three bodies here. There's the CPAG, the planning commission, and city council. So CPAG is monthly meetings between September and summer 2024. With that October joint meeting and the December meeting, the goal is that every month there will be a planning commission meeting, so those meetings will follow the CPAG meetings. So the topics that are in that work plan will also be presented in more detail based on review of advisory group members at those planning commission meetings. And then whatever comes out of this body will then be brought forth to council every two months. So those are more defined meetings with council, so by those meetings, there's more context and development of goals and policies, but we also want to ensure that council can have some preliminary feedback on items as well. So they're not just getting brought some fully baked materials, but they also have a role in forming the goals and policies that are presented in the, in the update.
Okay, so I know we also make recommendations to council. Are we also making recommendations to council, or is that only this group here?
No, planning commission will make recommendations.
Okay.
So in terms of the CPAG, it's an advisory recommendation, so it's presented to you as what we've heard from advisory members, and the ultimate recommendation will be from the planning commission to council. Yeah.
Okay, so are we, sorry, I wasn't sure if I was on. So then are we then working collaboratively with this group over the next, up until September, and then after September, do we have more items on the agenda for this, or are we making our recommendation at the same time, or maybe a little bit after this group?
September of...
Of '24.
Oh, yeah, so the role of the CPAG will ideally will, will end that process in the summer 2024. We haven't selected a month, only because things may change, but right now, plus or minus around August, yeah. And then we get into the draft comp plan review, and then the final comp plan adoption process. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? I know at the work session, council expressed their concern about the timeline, both with us getting enough time to, to really take a look at it, once the advisory committee has had a chance to have, you know, their two cents on it, and then to give council, you know, time for them to really digest what has been presented to them. Sounds like it's still being scheduled to end kind of late summer. I know council had some concern with that. Is there any thought of, you know, pushing that timeline up a little bit, so it'd be more like late spring to give us a little bit more time?
At this point, it's a conversation we need to have with our consultant as far as if that's a doable timeline.
Yeah, I'm going to chime in. So I think with the environmental impact statement and the amount of work that we have, that's going to be really difficult. That's why when the CPAG does their work, you guys are going to see it that same month. So the idea is you're seeing the materials as we go through the process, instead of the group getting the materials, then you folks getting the materials, and then council. So you're going to see those materials as they're recommended by the group, and then every two months, the council's going to see those materials. So they're not going to be seeing the materials at the end of the process, they're going to be seeing the materials throughout the process, and that's the same with planning commission. So if we can try to get everything together, hopefully earlier in the summer of '24, give you guys some time to go over everything again, even though you're reviewing it as we're going through it, then the idea is then, same with council, that they'll have an opportunity as well to have seen all these materials as they're being crafted and weigh in on them, instead of kind of what's typically been done, which is, you know, the group, planning commission, and city council very separately. So that's the idea, so that it won't be a foreign thing by the time you guys are all seeing it. Same with council. And we anticipate doing that chapter by chapter, so going through the chapter materials and reviewing those, and the same as, you know, how the environmental work progresses through a draft environmental impact statement, and then through a final environmental impact statement as well. So those will all be brought forth to you guys as we're going through that work. So hopefully that, I don't think that was understood by council at the last meeting necessarily, that it was going to be coming to them throughout next year. I think they were anticipating it was just going to come to them all at the end, so...
Okay, any, are there questions? So Commissioner Benshaw, you'd asked, you know, would the planning commission be collaborating with this advisory group, and the answer to that is no. It's going to be similar to how the town center was, because I know you were on the town center one, in that they're, they're going to be kind of coming up with their ideas and suggestions on their own, and the liaisons don't get a vote in that. So the liaisons are there, obviously to liaise, but, you know, what, what they're going to form, you know, will kind of be on their own between them, staff, and the consultants. So it sounds like we're, we're probably going to be doing a parallel exercise at the same time. Our ideas and recommendations don't necessarily have to 100% match up with the advisory body, and at the end of the day, it's our recommendation that's going to the city council, but obviously, since the, you know, a good chunk of this advisory group is actual, you know, residents, you know, we're going to take their recommendations, you know, in hand when, you know, when we formulate our decision. To the liaisons, I believe, did city council decide on, there's, I thought I saw it.
Yeah, so the next slide, I'm going to go over that.
Okay.
Yeah. And just for clarification, there won't be any voting in the comprehensive advisory group. It's just recommendations that are presented to the planning commission.
So how do they decide which, what they want to recommend and not want to recommend?
It'll be by consensus, but there's no, like, formal...
It's not a formal thing.
Yeah, it's not Robert's rules. Yeah.
So one of the things I understand about the town center planning commission that sounds a little bit different here is the, there's a little bit more linearity to the town center process where there was the working group, and then the planning commission also commented on it, and then the council recommended on it, but it sounds like here we're all kind of commenting on it at the same time. Is that my understanding, or is that...
I would say we're not necessarily commenting on it. We're, you know, we're getting, it sounds like monthly updates. We're probably doing parallel exercises, so...
Did the planning commission do parallel exercises during the town center process?
No. Before, before that last town center process, it was just the planning commission that would do that, because that's normally the role of the planning commission is to do this. Even one of the council members said that at their work session, but, you know, he's, they also said, you know, they see value in, you know, having outside voices come in. So, no, normally it was, it was just the planning commission that did it, you know, with the previous comps, comp plan updates and previous sub-area plan updates. It was planning commission, then city council. This last town center process was the first time where we had this advisory committee, so they made their recommendations to the planning commission, but then, you know, the planning commission had a whole nother idea of what they wanted to see, and so this is, and this gets to some of the concern that, you know, both I and, you know, some of the city council members have. It really came down to crunch time at the end, because we were buttoned up against time, you know, hard timelines to get this done, yet, you know, we needed time to really retool that. So what I suspect will happen here is if we see things throughout this process, and we're like, mm, we're not quite sure about that, we've seen it early enough where we can start thinking about that and having discussions about what would an alternative be, so when it comes time to actually make our formal decision, you know, we're not having to put that all together at once. We've had a chance to talk about that, and as, you know, as the time progresses, you know, things can evolve and change, and so, you know, we can revisit those conversations and say, okay, you know, you know, is this, is this something that we still, you know, where we were six months ago, are we still there? You know, has something changed? Have we learned something new? You know, well, you know, we're going to have that opportunity, you know, to, you know, discuss amongst ourselves, to, you know, to formulate, you know, that, that formal recommendation.
Yeah. One of the things I think we should discuss after this presentation, or, you know, kind of as we go through the presentation, is how exactly we're working with them and kind of what our standard, our understanding of the role is there and there, because I, us and our, like, you know, what we do, and also councils on this as well. Like, I think, I don't know, I'm interested in this process, because I think it, you know, has the potential to, you know, be a little bit less of, you know, siloed kind of approach that's in this linear approach, in this linear way, but like, the way that we are working and the way that they are working and how those things align, I think is going to be pretty important, so I'd be interested to have a discussion on that, you know, sort of at the end of this presentation.
I would say, as far as my understanding and the way this has been set up, and even when it was proposed originally, is that they're, you know, they're, they're going to be on their own doing this, with staff and the consultants. They'll have the liaisons. Obviously, as a citizen, you can go to the meeting, you can make any kind of public comment at the end, but we're, we're not there to step on their toes. We're going to let them do their process. We're going to do our process at the same time. This is, this is kind of new. This is one of the concerns I had about having, you know, another layer to this, whereas if it was our meeting, you know, just us running it, you know, we would be running the show, there would still be, you know, probably public chariots and, you know, information gathering sessions where, you know, where everybody can put in their input, and we could synthesize that. This, this, this is different.
Could I suggest that we have like a program charter, maybe that defines what they do, so it's clear through the process? I think it'll...
Yeah.
Help us understand how to consume their information.
Absolutely, and, and there will be, and there will, will be an exercise. I would, I would say that there's different ways of doing a plan update. A lot of jurisdictions use an advisory committee, and the reason they do that is to try to make the process more inclusive, more voices. There will be open houses, there will be opportunities for the public to weigh in, there will be public meetings open for the sub-areas to get input from folks, there will be public meetings for people to provide input on the EIS. So that's, it's not in lieu of, it's trying to create more input into a process. The liaisons are there to provide input into the, the comp plan advisory group as well. They're just not de facto recommendation-driven when they're at that meeting, so council liaison can, all the liaisons can provide input. And again, you guys are going to, instead of bringing you all the materials at the end, it is bringing you guys materials to talk about it and discuss it throughout the process, so we don't get to the end and have disagreement or concerns about materials being brought forth from a citizens committee, and again, it's, it's a recommendation, much like the planning commission is a recommendation to city council. And city council, when they get the materials, can say, "We want to do this, we don't want to do that, thank you for your recommendation as well," but the idea is to be more inclusive and provide more voices and opportunities throughout our process, both how we've traditionally done it with open houses and meetings, as well as other things, maybe where we haven't done so in the past. So just trying to stretch that a little bit more than we would have otherwise, where it was more kind of common, but I don't think that's uncommon anymore. Maybe we're just, we're a little slower to doing those things here.
I would say a lot of other jurisdictions in our region are forming advisory groups to inform the update process, since it is such a robust process and lots to incorporate. So having community voices involved on top of planning commissions and council, I think, is essential. Any other questions? Okay. So on August 21st, council appointed the following members through consent agenda, and also authorized the city manager to appoint remaining CPAG slots. So when we communicated that we wanted the advisory group, and that we were forming the advisory group, the max was 12 members. Right now, we have 11, not including the planning commission and city council liaison. So the goal is to continue a recruitment process, to identify other community members, and representation from sectors that council has recommended, so from the education sector and also local businesses. We did try to reach local businesses, and we're not successful, so we wanted to push this recruitment process forward by the end of the month, if, if not early September. So that's why the city manager has the role to appoint remaining CPAG slots. So currently, we have four community members. So Barbara Mendez is a community member from Mount Lake Terrace, Cassandra Dam is a community member, Desvi Cashin is a community member, and Keo Peterson is a student at Mount Lake Terrace High School, and also a member of the Gender and Sexuality Alliance Club. So we're excited to have them represented as a youth voice in this process. In terms of getting these community members, we did have a recruitment process where we had a news release that went out through our existing communication channels, so social media, our, our news, Let's Serve, our Let's Serve on our website, and it was also picked up by the Economic Alliance of Snoomish County. So we heard back from about four or five community members. We do have one community member pending right now, just trying to get some more information. So as far as reaching those folks, that was the avenue that we went. It was a directive from council to also incorporate boards and commission representatives. So we do have representatives from the Recreation and Parks Advisory Group, the Arts Advisory Commission, as well as the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission. So that is Keith Edholm, he's a commissioner, Scott Matsuda, commissioner on the DEIC, and Michelle Sanachal is a vice chair of the Arts Advisory Committee. Additionally, we wanted interested parties. So if you'll remember from the Public Participation Plan, we had a list of interested parties that we identified as wanting to ensure that their, their expertise is included in this process to inform our update. So I'll just highlight the interested parties that we identified. We're key property owners, corporate entities, major employers in the region, school district representatives, transit and transportation service providers, utilities and public service providers, community service organizations, and CBOs, community-based organizations, regional real estate developers, potential investors, regional housing developers of affordable housing, and city staff and leadership. Obviously, city staff are not on this advisory group. So out of that list, we came up with Carla Brown. She is the director of the Concern for Neighbors Food Bank, so it'll be good to have that representation on food insecurity and what some members of our community might be facing, especially following the pandemic. Chris Collier is a regional player in Snoomish County on affordable housing, so he is the Alliance for, the Affordable Housing Alliance Program Manager at the Housing Authority of Snoomish County. Dwayne Landsberg is the local developer of Landsberg Quality Group. Am I saying that right?
Quality Homes. It's close.
Quality Homes. Let's see. And then Joe Woods is a, he is a regional player in Washington State legislation, and also invest, an investor in our community, so having his input. So we are missing some people. We acknowledge that there are some gaps. So with this additional time to recruit some folks, we want to reach local businesses and, as recommended by council, the education sectors, so whether that's a local teacher, principal, member of the parent-teacher organization, or a superintendent, or somebody on the school board. So we do have someone from high school as a student, but having that other representative, representation there would be great. So on August 21st, council member Steve Woodard was selected as the city council liaison, so he will serve in that capacity. Let's see. And just acknowledging those gaps. So the goal is that we would minimize by providing more opportunity for more targeted engagement with specific groups and sectors that were not reached through this process. We want to make sure that there is a process available that will be more intentional of ensuring those voices are, are heard through this process. And so just wanted to communicate visually the makeup of the group. So it's a pretty, even, even split right now. It includes the two liaisons, so 13 CPAG members currently as of today, so four community members, four interested parties, two liaisons, and about three representing boards and commissions. As far as next steps, the, as I stated, we're still recruiting. The deadline, it says here, is August 31st. I think we can push it back a bit to early September to make sure we, we do get those representations there. And then CPAG kickoff on September 27th at 6:30 PM. And. That, I'm happy to answer additional questions that you might have.
If you, or I should say the city manager, aren't able to identify that 12th member, is it possible to have someone from the planning commission be appointed as that 12th member in addition to the liaison?
That'd be up to the city manager at that point. I know the city manager's at the chamber function this evening looking for an additional business member. Like Jonathan said, we reached out to the chamber previously. So this has been an exercise of just trying to cast a net and see who will volunteer. So these are the people that volunteered simply.
And I, yeah, sorry.
Oh, and we have a couple of folks at the high school that are trying to see if maybe somebody's interested that they know but would welcome. If you guys know someone that's in the education field that would like to participate. At, at this point, council's left it up to the city manager to fill those positions. I know there's a council member that has recommended a community member, and we've reached out to her and should know if she wants to do it tomorrow, but, so there'd still be an education and a business rep that's needed.
I can imagine it's hard to try and get an education rep in summertime.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's been frankly difficult all around.
Yes.
So.
Just a suggestion. I don't know if he'd want to do it, he's probably too busy with basketball, but Vic Sood's son, Naylin, works at Terrace High. You may have met him, he was at Vic's last thing. He might be able to get some traction, or at least have an idea of maybe somebody at the high school.
Okay.
Who, who would be interested or qualified. Like I said, I'm sure he's pretty busy running his top-tier basketball program, plus being a teacher there, so, but he might have some ideas.
Can you say the name again?
Naylin Sood. Yeah, it's Vic's son.
Okay.
Vic was before your time, but Vic was on the planning commission for quite a while. And before that, he, he, he actually helped start community transit, then went down south and managed Bart down in San Francisco, and then when he retired, he came back up here and volunteered on the planning commission again, because I think before he had, in the 70s, can't remember if he was on the planning commission, or if he actually was on the city council at some point, but then he went to San Francisco, came back in retirement, and then was on the planning commission for quite a few years. In fact, he, can't remember if he started the same meeting I did, or maybe one meeting later, but yeah, he was, he was on it for a while, then he finally retired, retired. But yeah, his son Naylin might have an idea, or, you know, some just suggestions, so.
Yeah. We welcome anybody that knows of someone that, you know, basically is in for 10 to 12 meetings and a couple of open houses and some other stuff along the way. So I know it's a commitment for, for folks. Definitely, we're trying to make the meetings hybrid and do some other stuff to make it as easy as we possibly can along the way, but.
Yeah.
So this is a, is this a targeted 12-member commission? I know you mentioned two different categories of people, and there's one more spot.
Yeah, so obviously, we'll have probably 13 or 14.
13 or 14, plus the liaisons.
Yep.
I like the range of people that is on this. I would be interested, kind of, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to, to broach it again, but sort of, you know, how we work in parallel with them. I know it would be interesting to be able to ask them questions that we might have as we're working on our things, you know, especially with some, some of the experts. And it sounds like, you know, they'll probably determine themselves exactly how they've determined what the consensus is for the recommendations and stuff like that, but I think when we're working here, there's an opportunity to, you know, maybe ask them some questions as we're talking and send them to them, and then, you know, whoever's the liaison can report back with answers to those questions, and maybe a little summary report or something, just kind of summarizing, so we understand kind of what the consensus is, because I'm guessing that the minutes will probably be pretty detailed and may or may not actually have like a summary of the consensus. So I think that would be things I would like to see us be able to do, and sort of to understand what they're doing as we're working in parallel.
Sure. So, so the advisory group members will see material pretty fresh, and they'll have firsthand in sort of brainstorming and coming up with different goals and policies that we might incorporate through this update process. The goal is that those sort of recommendations or discussion points will then be brought forth to the planning commission, so you would get to see those and have a discussion about it, and then further develop what they've recommended. So as far as the flow, I think that's what we're envisioning. The role of the planning commission, liaison would be that they would be there and provide input, but allow the advisory group members to sort of come up with their consensus, and then report back to the planning commission as far as what was heard or discussed. So if, if there are any questions from planning commission, that can be something that we can add to the agenda during the advisory group, or it can just flow naturally in conversation. So, yeah.
Okay, and I assume when we have our exercises, the, or when we do our bit, the liaison would have an introduction and be able to say, this is what was discussed, this is kind of the consensus that was achieved, and then we would be able to use that to inform our decisions as well.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you would have the materials from the advisory committee as well as the liaison that could help provide some clarification. If something got to the point where, hey, we need further clarification or something, we could definitely take it back to the advisory group. You folks are going to have two meetings to their one meeting, which for some of these topics, it's not going to be that you're going to look at things one time and be done with it. You know, when we're talking certain things like the land use chapter, the transportation chapter, or different things like that, there's going to be more time spent on some things than others, definitely. And so, you know, we'll kind of see how that goes and, you know, and we have a general outline of bringing things to you, but of course, depending on where we get, you know, where we'll have to massage that and where we need to along the way. We also are going to have to have some development regulations adopted by December of '24. Critical areas, there's going to be some updates that need to be done. Fortunately, we, in critical areas, I'm sorry if I'm talking jargon, just stop me, is what we have to do to protect wetland areas, fish and wildlife, habitat areas, aquifer recharge areas, flood plains, and I'm missing one of them. But we adopted critical areas ordinance, I believe, in 2019. So we'll just need to make sure that we're, we're up with the latest requirements for that. And then also, the intent is, is that we're trying to get as much development review as we can get done. As part of this, I don't think we'll be as successful with town center, because we were talking a smaller area, meaning having all the zoning in place and everything that we need. But we're going to try to have the big things fleshed out as much as we possibly can in a year and a half. So, and what we need to, you know, expand on, we'll just, planning commission will keep working on that. So your work won't be done in December of '24. Oh, no. There'll be more fun, because we'll have more work to do. So with the development regulations and zoning and those types of things too, so there'll be plenty of opportunity to take, to put the goals and policies that we identify in the comp plan and put those into motion. And in my mind, the comp plan's important, it's very important, because it sets the framework for all that you do, but rubber hits the road in implementation, plain and simple. We can say that we're going to do all kinds of great neat things, but unless we have implementation ordinances, we don't do that. So we need to carry forth and make sure that we do those things that we identify that the city wants to do. Really important. So we'll keep, we'll keep at it. And, yeah, hopefully we'll be timely and, you know, get a lot of work done that needs to be done. We're working with regulations in some cases that date back to the 60s, 70s. It's like the oldies radio station, 80s, 90s, and today. But yeah, just, you know, it's kind of all over the board. Some things conflict with each other, so we want to make sure that, you know, we're taking a look at things as a whole, which is easier said than done in my experience writing code. But, you know, there's a way to do that, and that's why we do it, so. We're going to tackle it. Any other questions before you guys select a liaison? We can ask the question. I have a sneaking hunch we'll probably have, hopefully, a business rep after tonight.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, we'll have, put additional fillers out for an education rep. That would be nice, even though we have a student, which is great. That's usually very difficult to get a student to volunteer, because I realize it's hard. You know, you're going to school and homework and activities and all the things everybody has, so, but it would be nice to have that input. So.
They're probably going to have, what, like nine meetings or something between now and September, maybe twelve?
Yeah, I would say, you know, nine to twelve. And then, of course, wanting to participate in the open houses and the other, you know, public engagement opportunities, I think is worthwhile being there, you know, to hear what folks have to say and get a pulse on, you know, those things. Our intention is all of that information as we move forwards on the website. So if people happen to miss something, they can, you know, make sure that they have all the information at hand. Same with the planning commission. If you miss a meeting, all that information's going to be tracked. So, you know, you can bounce back in and make sure you're not missing anything in the conversation moving forward.
Would we want to, since there is a limited number and like, you know, there's, you know, information we'll have after the fact, but like during the meeting, it sounds like there's consensus to understand and things like that. Do we want to also have like maybe an alternate planning commission representative in case, you know, somebody gets sick or something? I mean, it sounds like each meeting is a little bit precious.
You know, I mean, that hasn't been a conversation. Again, since I'm not the legal authority, we can, we can ask the city manager if, you know, council wants an alternate. I mean, I would imagine just like the folks on the advisory committee, somebody may miss a meeting, you know, that type of thing. But we can ask, so.
Commissioner Betcher does bring up, you know, an interesting point and, you know, we're kind of thinking about this. The, the last town center update, we actually had two liaisons for the city council and the planning commission. Is there a reason why it was decided to only have one of each this time?
I couldn't tell you. Yeah.
Because, like I said, does have to, you know, have a backup if, you know, for some reason one can't make it, you know, the, the other's there. But what I would say too, when you're deciding who, you know, who's going to be the representative is that you want, you want somebody who's had experience doing this before, doing these comp plan updates. But more importantly, the last time during the town center, a lot of the time, the liaisons, both Alice and myself spent in those meetings was talking to the city council members and explaining why certain commission or advisory committee members were making certain recommendations and how that would sometimes benefit them more as an individual or their business as opposed to, you know, you know, looking at as the whole as like, oh, is this a recommendation that is great for the city as a whole? Or do they somehow outsized, you know, receive outsized benefit in that? So, you know, kind of be able to see the forest through the trees a little bit and, you know, have, you know, being comfortable having that dialogue with, with the, the city council liaison as well. You're there as an observer, you're not there to dominate the conversation, but you can still have that, that dialogue between yourself and the, and the city council liaison. So when it does come time for you to talk about it with your group, you know, you can, you can bring that point of view back and say, hey, this is, this is what I saw, this is, but more importantly, this is who was recommending or pushing certain things in a certain way. And here we have, you know, like I said, cities tried to make a very diverse selection so far of the advisory group. But in doing so, except for, I would probably say, because I think you said that Barbara Mendez had the planning background.
Yes, as I understand it, they work in environmental planning consulting.
But besides that, and then the, the developer and lobbyist, everybody else is coming fresh to this, you know, they may not have much exposure to planning process in general or, you know, specifically working on updating city, you know, city plans, city codes, city ordinances. So it's really easy for certain entities to dominate that conversation one way or another. People would just kind of go along, oh, yeah, I don't, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. But, you know, being able to have that conversation, that dialogue, recognizing that and then, you know, not only having those discussions with the other liaison, but then bringing back the, the planning commission. So, you know, kind of have that thousand-foot view of everything that's going on because, you know, you see one thing in the minutes, but to actually, you know, to actually be there and see kind of how that dialogue played out because not everything can be a hundred percent transcribed in, in, in the minutes, so.
Right.
Now, that's, that's, that's a big thing to keep, keep in mind when you're, when you're choosing who you want to be the liaison is that they, they're going to have to be able to have that comfortable and sometimes awkward conversation with a city council member about, you know, whatever the discussion topic is, is for that night, so.
So my understanding is that the liaison will be a more active part of this than they were during the town center where I feel like they weren't actually talking a whole lot. Is that not correct? They're, they're there to listen or are they there to participate in consensus?
I think the intention was to have it more like how the town center was.
No, I think it's to participate.
More participation?
Yeah.
That's good, because it was hard sitting on the bench.
Well, I would say, like you said, not dominate the conversation, but definitely.
Add to.
And that goes for everyone.
Yeah.
Which, which has happened at the, during the town center one as well. You know, there was, there, you know, both city council and Alice and I, you know, spoke up, you know, when appropriate, but definitely, you know, you know, wasn't dominating the conversation. You know, it was, you know, far in between and, you know, there were probably some meetings where we may not have said much of anything at all. And then there were other meetings where we were providing a lot more experience and background. And that's what's important with the liaison too, is having somebody who, who has enough experience under their belt, you know, if, you know, if the, the question arises that you are able to address it and answer it and say, okay, well, this is what we did previously or this is, or if somebody asks, well, why is it this way? Well, you have that historical narrative. You can say, okay, well, this was the thought process five years ago, ten years ago, this is why these certain decisions were made and that's how it was a change from what it was before. But at the end of the day, it's the, the advisor group is coming up with their own recommendation on their own. Planning commission's going to get their own chance to come up with their own recommendation. It may mirror theirs exactly, but I suspect there's going to be, there's going to be some differences. There always is.
Okay, so how does a liaison from this group to that group work then? I know we're also sort of consensus-driven as well, but there is some, usually some discussion in order to get to that consensus. So this would be a representative on that that's also like, you know, sort of taking that pot of consensus and putting it into another pot of consensus. What role do we think they should have in that other consensus group that then is giving us recommendations?
I lost you at the end there. So, meaning how are they supposed to bring back thoughts or materials to the planning commission?
I think, I think so. So, you know, is our liaison to this group going to operate more of like, you know, kind of on their own independently or is it going to be trying to represent a consensus of the planning commission that then, you know, comes back to us and reports what the consensus of the overall community is?
No, I mean, I think it's impossible to provide a consensus to planning commission when the advisory group gets the materials first. I think the liaison is watching the process as it goes, providing input along the way. And then when you, as a body, get the materials, that person has been a part of that discussion and can provide additional insight to the planning commission. But ultimately, their, their consensus or their recommendation is just that. It's a recommendation to you folks. And, you know, just like council doesn't have to do everything that planning commission recommends, it's the same. You can, you know, take their recommendation and their thoughts and their advisement to form your own consensus recommendation as a body. That's simply what it's for.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would say you would, whoever the liaison is, you're probably going to get more hands-on as part of the planning commission than you are as part of being the liaison to the advisory group.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think everybody on the planning commission will be more hands-on. It's one step closer to council. You know, they're going to get your recommendation.
So how can we add the most value to this group then? Giving context of the planning commission's previous discussions or, you know, what, where would we add value to this process as part of that consensus?
I think that's a part of it, but also a part of it is, to me, understanding, bringing the information back from the advisory committee to the planning commission. And to me, that's probably more important, acting as that link between the two bodies and what was shared there, if there's additional questions or clarifications or the mood or, you know, actually, there was a lot of discussion on this topic. It dominated the, you know, the, the group discussion. This was very important or, you know, things like that, that, you know, were of value to that group.
Great.
Yeah.
That's all for me. We're ready to move on to the vote.
All right. Is there anybody who has any interest on being the liaison?
I would like to do it, but I also strongly think there should be at least an alternate. So I'm happy to serve in either of those roles if, you know, this position we just invented happens to exist as well.
I would say, I would like to do it as well. I'd say only because, you know, this, I think this is the third comp plan update that I will have been a part of. So I kind of bring that sort of institutional knowledge of where we are, where we've been and where we're going. But I would also say that, and this is to everybody, not just anybody who'd be interested in being a potential backup, is that, you know, the meetings are open to the public and you're more than welcome to come to the meetings. And even if you, if you see something and you want to say something, there, there will be a public comment period at the end of those meetings as well. So if you feel that, that, that conversation, whatever happened at that meeting, completely missed the boat on something, you can, and you're there, you can, you can, you know, as a citizen, you can come in during the public comment and say, hey, I think, I think your decision's great, but hey, you guys completely missed this point of view, please consider this or, you know, however politely and ethically you want to make that, your, your, your voice heard, but, but definitely, e- even if the, if the council said, or council or city manager says, no, we're not going to have a liaison, I would still recommend whoever is interested in being a liaison and not only that, but everybody, you know, still come to the meeting, come to that process so you can kind of see firsthand, you know, those discussions and, and how they play out.
I will mention the, the two people who probably talk the most at these meetings now have to go to a meeting where we cannot dominate. Is anyone also interested in, in serving?
I wouldn't mind being an alternate if needed.
And like I said, you know, we're the, whoever the appointee is, won't, won't be speaking a lot, you know, probably speak especially if they, you know, questions are asked of them. But I think more importantly is just having that real, that dual role as a liaison with the city council member. I can only tell you from previous exercises like this, a lot of dialogue happens between those liaisons. Because in, in the town center plan, you had one former planning commissioner who had been a planning commissioner only for a couple of years before he got appointed to the city council. And then you had another city council member who had never been on the planning commission. So for her, all of this, all of it was new, you know, it was kind of, it's, so it was kind of, you know, kind of, every meeting has explained things, you know, that if they had questions or, or more importantly, when certain entities were dominating the conversation, you know, having that sort of the sidebar with just the council member and explaining, hey, this is their, this is where they're coming from. And by recommending this, this is, this is what they're probably hoping the outcome will be and how does that benefit them versus the greater good, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I believe, I, Commissioner Wood, or sorry, council member Woodard had expressed a strong desire to, to be on this advisory group. So I am sure he is raring to go and will probably have a lot of questions and a lot of, a lot of input, so it'll probably be a lot of, a lot of dialogue.
Great. Since it sounds like we might be voting, should I give a little speech also? I promise to not dominate the conversation. I will take notes during the meeting and report back to the planning commission, as I hope you will as well. And I think that, you know, Nick brings experience. I bring not so much experience in planning, but also, you know, experience in the construction industry, which, you know, Nick also brings experience in planning as well. So I think, you know, we both will have different perspectives, but I think we can both accurately represent, and I can represent what the consensus was and try not to dominate, but to inform.
Is anybody else interested in doing this? It's a good exercise, good practice, especially for our newbies. No?
No, sure.
And you said you were just, you'd be interested in being?
I'd be interested in being an alternate.
Okay.
I don't think I have the comprehensive plan experience that probably is needed. Probably is good input into.
Okay, so seeing how I guess would be one of the people being voted on, probably should have, throw this to the vice chair to, to run this vote.
All right.
And how would I, I just announce?
So basically, just take a, you know, it's a I or a nay, just, you know, for both I and Adam, you know, would be who's voting for who. So if everyone's feeling comfortable having the public vote, if you want to have it a private vote, we could always, privately, usually it's just public, just yay or nay, so.
I'm not going to be offended either way.
Yes, opening it up for a public vote for liaison to the CPAC group. We start with vote for council member Betcher. I, I guess it's would just be.
Probably have to, probably have to take account or maybe just raise hands.
Oh, um, sure. Just hands for council, uh, sorry, Commissioner Betcher. And raise of hands for Commissioner Batista. Looks like three to two if I count it correctly, so that goes to Commissioner Betcher.
Thank you. I promised to do the note-taking that you have nominated me for. I also think it would be very important, and I don't know if this is the vote we take now, but to have an alternate as well, just because, I don't know if we do that now or later, but I would strongly want at least a backup.
I would say if you guys want an alternate, I would take a vote and then we could take that to the city manager for consideration and that that was the request.
All right, I nominate Chair Batista as the alternate.
And.
Shall we?
I was going to say Commissioner Morgan also expressed interest in being the alternate, so.
Yeah, I, I think you would also be great as well. For me, it'd mostly be an experience thing, but I do have wide wealth of experience in design and construction, both residential, commercial, and working for developers. So I'd still put my name in the hat.
Okay, by show of hands, shall we have a vote for Commissioner Batista as the alternate? And show of hands, vote for Commissioner Morgan as the alternate.
Uh-oh.
If I counted that right, it's.
You got a tie.
Oh, tie, okay. So I'm not sure where do we go from there? Do we vote again or?
What's that? Rock, paper, scissors.
But, you know, I'll tell you, I think this would be a good experience for Commissioner Morgan to, you know, kind of. you know, kind of dip your toe into, you know, sort of serving on these joint bodies and, you know, kind of learning the lay of the land. Even, like I said, even if city managers said, no, we're not going to have an alternate, still, you know, still come to the meetings, you know, have that opportunity. Obviously, you won't be able to participate in the discussions as they're happening, but you, you know, you could always use that public comment period at the end, so I'm willing to step aside and let Commissioner Morgan have that opportunity as the liaison, if it's so deemed an official position by the powers that be.
Okay. Great, we'll forward that along.
And I would say, just, you know, it's, well, obviously, I have no doubt you'll be, you know, taking notes, you know, it's staff's responsibility to also provide that information back to us, not necessarily yours, but you can definitely kind of give us a feel of those conversations that occurred.
Yes, and also, please, please share with me anything you want to share at that meeting, because I don't want to just run off on my own. I think it's good that, you know, we collectively as a body are able to operate on consensus.
So is that it, then, for the advisor group?
Yeah.
For tonight? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number eight, Director's Report.
Yeah, just a couple of things. So as we mentioned earlier, there's going to be a very important training. Everybody really work hard to make this meeting on October 4th, a joint meeting with Planning Commission, city council, and the advisory group members. Comp Plan 101 really is going to give folks, hopefully, a good background into what we're trying to accomplish, what we're required to accomplish by the State Growth Management Act. There is some legislation that was passed in 1990 that's still applicable, and there's a lot of amendments, and more recent amendments to the act that really are trying to focus on inclusion, and thinking about that in different ways than we have before, thinking about providing for affordable housing and alternative housing types, like we've really never been required to do before. And so there's some new things. And then in our comp plan, we do have a couple of elements that are not required, such as the wreck-in-parks element, but are very important to this community, and so they will remain in our comp plan as well. But there's definite requirements of the act, and people might say, well, we don't want to do that. They can't tell us what to do. I would just say, we could go down that road. I worked for a jurisdiction that did that in the early 90s, and they were sued by the state. But what it means is, if you're a jurisdiction that's noncompliant, then you're not eligible for a lot of different grant funding. So that road project you want to do, that water upgrade you want to do, the state has a way of enticing you to do those things ultimately, and to not do them is a lot of effort and work and legal wrangling and hearings, et cetera. So the point is, is that we want to adopt a plan that's compliant, found compliant by the state, and also to be as inclusive and as saying, here's what we need to do, folks, how do we do that in a Mount Lake Terrace way that works the best for this community? That's really what it's all about. What are we trying to do that fits us best with the framework that we're given? So I think if we approach things in that manner and try to plan in that manner the best way we can, we're going to have a successful outcome. And it is a lot of work to update a comp plan, but it also provides us the roadmap to do those other things that we need to do. Growth is going to occur. We're getting light rail. The region is growing, so how do we do that in the best way possible, knowing it's going to happen either? It's going to happen to us, or we try to plan for that the best way we can. To keep this a place where everybody is glad that they still live here is, you know, the ultimate goal, is that we keep it a really great place, so, or make it even better, which is what we need to be doing. Other than that, so we'll be sending you out reminders, we're having a dinner before that, but that'll be a 6:30 start, so that's really important. Staff's going to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. We're wrapping those folks into our process as well as we go along to get their input on things. And I know we're going September 20th, and I can't remember our other date that we have already outlined.
Tensatively November 15th.
And then we're working on putting together a public open house end of October, first part of November as well, taking some questions and posing some different things to the general community at large, and then also getting input on alternatives for what we call scoping under environmental review. So the city needs to come up with some general alternatives that we research as part of environmental review, and getting people's thoughts and comments on that before we select a preferred alternative and start that work. So an EIS is usually months in the making. It's a heavy lift. We did the Town Center, and we need to refresh and then also do the parts of the city that haven't been done in quite a long time, so that will be, it's a much-needed exercise that goes along hand in hand with what we're doing. And we'll also, Jonathan and the consultant team and myself have been working on refining our overall work plan, and so we're going to get that out to you, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, as well as refined as we can right now as to plugging in all the things that we need to throughout the, to the end of this process. So just having a better idea of when every CPAG meeting is, when the Planning Commission gets things, when we go to DEIC, when we're anticipating a broader outreach to the public, and all of those good things. So we're plugging in all of those pieces to a schedule, and then I think that might be helpful, too, to just get a general idea. And like I said, best-laid plans, that's what we're going to use as our roadmap, and, you know, if we get off on a side road, well, then we'll kind of, you know, course-correct as we go, but we have to be fairly determined to do certain things in a timely manner, because a year and a half is going to be here. We're going to be here next, at the start of next September, before you know it, and go like, phew, wow, you know? That seemed like it went really fast. So that's what I've been saying today about the summer, like, August 28th, or the summer ago. So it'll be a lot of work, even though it's like, oh, we've got a year and a half to do that. So anyways, those are kind of the big, important things that are going on. We're trying to wrap up some kind of major things with Sound Transit, moving all their permits forward currently, and have been meeting with them quite frequently as well lately, just on some of the bigger projects that are kind of going on under the scene. That's really all I have, unless you have a question on something particular going on.
Not so much a question, but kind of a request. At the last city council work session, Metro came and gave a presentation on some of the route changes. A lot of that was routes that didn't necessarily affect Mount Lake Terrace, but there was a couple of key ones for routes that are being eliminated and new routes that will be coming into Mount Lake Terrace. Is it possible to at least have, you know, have that portion of the presentation kind of at our next Planning Commission meeting, for the rest of the commissioners, just kind of hear what Metro's concept was? You know, everything's, you know, proposed right now, nothing's set in stone, but between the actual established routes that they're going to have, and also their, I'm blanking on the name, what they called it, I know community transit calls it DART, but...
Like their swift?
Their swift, yes, yes.
Okay.
Because they were talking about that, too, and how that's sort of depended on, a little bit on community transit, and, but I think that was really important, and it kind of leads into, you know, our planning process in general here.
Yeah.
So I think, that was great information that they gave, and it'd be nice to...
Yeah, we can reach out to them and see if they'll do a presentation to Planning Commission.
And if they can, at least the PowerPoint that they had, you know, and just...
Okay.
You know, just carve out a couple of minutes just to kind of go over, you know, what was gone on over that meeting, so.
Okay.
I don't want to make them come, though one of them does live in the city, so.
I always think it's kind of nice, because if there's questions, too, then you guys have an opportunity to ask the people that are working on that. So it's kind of nice if we can get them here, then we'll do that. You heard from Sound Transit a little while back, but I'd like to...
I felt more positive out of the metro than I have in Sound Transit in quite a while, so that was, that was interesting, so. I was pleasantly surprised. I was like, Metro, why are they here? What have they got? I was like, oh, that's what they got, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it is important, because, you know, those things don't stop at the city line, and so they all interconnect with what works.
And it used to. And they even made that comment, and it's funny, because that's how it used to be. Metro had a turf war with community transit. That's why community transit was only restricted to certain streets downtown Seattle, because Metro's like, no, this King County is our territory, we're not going to let you drive anywhere here. Same with the Udis, there's only a few identical, but so it's kind of like, that mindset has kind of gone out the window now.
Yeah.
And they're like, oh, we're all in this together, kumbaya, let's hold hands and sing songs. So it's, once you tear that barrier down, it's amazing...
Absolutely.
...what ideas now are coming to not only serve our city, but, you know, our little subregion of, you know, North King County, South Snohomish County, you know, because we're... I tell people this all the time, in any other region in this country, we would still be part of Seattle. So the fact that not only are we in a different city, but a different county, yet we're so close to Seattle, any other major jurisdiction, we wouldn't have some of these barriers that we seem to face, so it's...
Well, except LA.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just throw that little, I mean, talk about it a little bit crazy, but anyhow, at least we're not LA, I guess. That's our tagline. But yeah, it just, you know, when you start growing and you run into each other, you're like, hmm, this is, seems a little bit goofy, but yeah, it's definitely improved for the better in that communication, so we will, we will put that on our list to try to make that happen.
Great. Anybody else have any questions for staff? All right, not hearing or seeing anything. We'll go and move on to item number nine here, miscellaneous business by call of Planning Commission. Does anybody have any miscellaneous business? Any vacations coming up that they know about? Not hearing or seeing any? All right, so why don't we go ahead and try the photos after we adjourn? So not hearing or seeing anything else?
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and declare the meeting adjourned, and we'll try and do the photo.
All right. Thank you.